Yes?
Yes, we're ready.
All right, stand by.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for February 3rd. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Lynn, do we have any announcements?
We do. So just another reminder that the Open Space and Recreation Plan public survey launched on the 22nd and that we would really welcome any resident input and for people to take that survey, please, there is a link on the town website. Presidential primaries March 3rd, absentee and early voting information has also been posted on the town website. You can pick up an absentee ballot or vote by absentee ballot in the town clerk's office now. And also, early voting will be available from February 24th through February 28th and generally from 8:00 to 5:00. There will be extended hours on Tuesday, the 25th of February until 7:00 PM. The school department budget, draft budget is available online and they are seeking review and comment from the general public. There is a public budget meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 here in this room if anyone wanted to join. That's all I had for announcements.
Just one thing I wanted to add is there are nomination papers available now at Town Hall and I think we have Select Board seats, School Committee might be planning for two, so if you're interested in running for office.
Housing?
Housing, yeah, Housing Authority also. Thanks. Any other announcements?
I'd just say that I did the survey, I followed the link, and it took seven minutes, so I would encourage people who are interested in recreation in our community to fill it out, just to help.
Any Select Board comments?
Yeah, I have one. We, what, about two or three weeks ago, we got this report on the crumbling foundations and I'd like to recommend we put that on the agenda for an upcoming meeting so we can look at it in a little more detail, make sure everybody's aware. There's about 15 different steps that were outlined in the back of it that are going to take outreach, we can't do them on our own, but I think they're going to be officially having a meeting here in the next two weeks or months and they're not coming here and they're not going to East Long Meadow for the V and ones and so I think it's about time we possibly put it on the agenda and just get it out in discussion, see where we're going with it. Well, you know, last weekend, we went to, or not this, but the weekend before last, we went to the Mass Municipal Association Conference in Boston and there were a couple of things that came out of that that were interesting. I went to an interesting session on bike trails and the, you know, I guess part of it is when we look at our changing population and younger people are more willing to ride bikes to work than perhaps my generation was. And so I look at all the folks who drive through our town from East Long Meadow and beyond. If there was a way to get an efficient bike trail, you know, through Forest Park in a way to Springfield or down one of those side streets, Dickinson or something, that would really, could change our traffic situation significantly and so, you know, that was a good thing for us to think about. There was also an interesting project they did with scooters and they did it in this town of Brookline and they have those electric suitors that you can just swipe your card and use those. And I think, you know, again, they were surprised, a lot of people in their 30s and 40s were using those scooters. Some folks didn't think they were, you know, because they'd be laying around the community, but then other pieces, I think younger people really found it exciting to have something like that available. I don't know if we'd have a scooter company be interested in it, but that was a pretty interesting thing. And then the other thing, I talked to someone and they talked about doing preliminary reports and when I looked at the School Committee, they had talked about the possibility of looking into other solutions for the middle schools. And they said, that's not unusual for towns to look at that kind of thing, to see if a K through eight would be a better fit for our community because we have several schools that are, you know, grammar schools that maybe we'd expand on, or if we really are going to look at middle school education and what's the values of that to our students versus K through eight. So, you know, I don't know, I know that, you know, the School Committee's working on that, but it was interesting to see that some of the things I heard at the conference were paralleling with what was going on in our School Committee. So I guess I'd say, School Committee, you're doing a good job, you're right on target. And I don't know if anyone else had anything that they got out of that conference that was really helpful, but that was good for me.
Any other Select Board comments? How about resident comments? All right, I'm going to jump past Lynn's report so we could get some of the people that are waiting here to be interviewed. Oh, actually, that's above you anyways. All right, so we'll start with, let's see, people that are here for the Senior Housing, Carol Steiner and Roger Wolchek, would you like to come up, interview together? State your name, your address, and why you would like to be on the new task force.
My name's Carol Steiner. I live at 82 Williamsburg Drive. I would, thought I would be a good fit for the Senior Task Force as I've worked with seniors for many years. I visit seniors in their homes, I know about the different housing within the town, both the, the homes, the apartments, the different developments, and I'm aware of certain needs that seniors have in this community.
Thank you. And Roger?
Roger Wolchek, I live at 29 Burns Meadow, which is one of the senior housing units in town. Before I talk about some of the things that may be helpful to you, I'd like to learn more about the scope of the job. If it's senior housing, it's one thing, it's trying to keep the seniors in town, it's completely different. And if somebody on the Board could help me just understand the scope of the job, or the mission, or the goals, or call it what you want, it would be very helpful so that maybe I could in turn address those issues.
So Richard and I have talked about this and it's coined, the Senior Housing Task Force. That's certainly a big piece of it, but I think it's broader in scope than that. It's, you know, what do our seniors need to increase their quality of life, to keep them in town, things of that nature, transportation, really whatever comes up in the meetings.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. About five years ago, plus mine was a couple of years ago, John Bowen and I held a community meeting in town and brought together some 22 different groups. You're nodding like you were there?
Yes.
22 groups of people whose focus was providing this, that, or the other, an array of senior services that I had no idea even at the age of the 70s at the time, was available. We asked them same kind of question, now that you're here, welcome, and tell us how you help the citizens in Long Meadow. Most of them focused on the seniors and we got an array of answers, but more importantly, we obtained information that would help us establish the utility of, at that point in time was a bright idea, which was the new senior center. And so I come away from that experience, and again, now I've got a list of names and places and things to do that might be helpful outside of just literally housing in terms of the nuts and bolts and the lumber or whatever. Housing by itself is quite an issue and I'm saying that because as a member of the Board of trustees for the condo unit that I'm associated with, we're finding out that we are, even though we've been in town as a group some 26 years, we're about 25 years out of date and perhaps out of compliance with the regulations and the laws that FHA, HUD, and HOPA are applying to units like ours. We'll get through that. We've got the skill base and the appropriate legal support to establish clearly an up-to-date basis, as I put it, doing business in town. But should we at the town look at issues such as perhaps converting, reverting, changing the use of the existing multiple unit spaces or even single unit spaces and groups into literally age-restricted communities, and there is value in doing that, it's going to be a heck of a job. Building new units to the extent we can, no question about it, we have an assorted, very few, but assorted number of spaces that we might be able to do something useful. In terms of providing services, again, the step into the arena was that community meeting about, as I say, five or six years ago, and I would hope to be able to build on that and the resources that I found were available, along with the people that were involved. John Bowen and I helped set it up, Becky Townsend chaired it. Marie was there, I know, and just as an observer, which I thought was great, and I would hope to be able to at least use that background along with my current work on the actual housing for seniors in town to provide useful support to this task force.
I was there too. And it was five, six years ago.
But you didn't smile nicely like she did, so I know that.
Always below the covers. The other thing too, you know, I would hope at the end, the end result of this would be that we would go on record as being a senior-friendly community. And we don't share that right now. I mean, we're a wonderful school community and we're a wonderful safe community, but we have 30% of our population is 60 and above right now. And, you know, like Mark and I talked, we would hope that this study will bring us up to speed on every possible deficiency we currently have or obstacle to success that would enable us to promote ourselves as a senior-friendly community. And that pretty well opens up the palate, it just lays it wide on the table. I mean, you've mentioned 15, 20 things and they all fit under that same umbrella.
At 30% population over 60, we're probably in the top five communities in the state of this Massachusetts here that have that kind of a high percentage. I've seen the numbers, but they don't, they're not as recent as what you have, Richard. And as I say, there's huge opportunities. The task force doesn't make the commitment, the Select Board makes the commitment once it's got some stuff in front of it in terms of the report from the task force. But to convert this into a senior community is going to take an extraordinary effort, commitment on the part of not only the Select Board that'll be driving and guiding this, but the entire community. And that's where it takes tremendous amount of effort on the part of even a few people, but persistence to advertise. Talk about advertising, that will pay off. Talk about work, that will pay off. The new senior center is a place to do work in, will pay off, there's no question about it. And so I'm wholly supportive of what you're trying to accomplish. One of the things I would hope this task force does is to look at some of these other models. Again, they're out there and more of them in the, perhaps the eastern part of the state than the western part of the state, but that's okay, we can get around. There's also more firepower in terms of legal counsel in the eastern part of the state. We are pernir a dry well when it comes to strong legal support of senior communities in this part of the state. Found that out the hard way through some of the work that we're doing here. So wholly supportive of what you want to accomplish and I will push to make it happen, plain and simple.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming and volunteering. Is this our last group of interviews for the task force?
The task force.
Yeah, okay, so we will be voting at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. McCall, McCahey? McCahey? Would you come and state your name, your address, and what you're applying for?
So, hello everyone. My name is Karen McCahey. I live at 525 Wolf Swamp Road, right in Long Meadow, obviously, and I'm applying for the Conservation Committee. And basically, I guess the reason why is I kind of grew up here, always fell in love with, you know, obviously the nature and the wilderness and the meadows especially. As much as, you know, it can offer, and obviously going to a school for college as well with criminal justice and environmental science, basically I just developed a passion to keep pursuing it and I think something along the lines of working for where I grew up and possibly caring about it even more and being more passionate is something, opportunity I'd like to take and I saw the opening, so I said, you know, why not?
Thank you for volunteering. Questions?
Well, you know, for your main employment, I see you're an account engineer, but, or accountant, executive, but does your company have anything to do with conservation or?
So we personally do not have anything to do, like, we don't go out of our way for conservation, but my personal role is, I am actually currently working with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Management. And basically, I mean, it's not really so much of conservation with them, but working with them and understanding their goals, because I'm mostly in an IT role at the moment, but just talking to them, saying like, hey, you know, pass all the business mumbo jumbo, like, what are you guys going through, like, kind of understanding how they go through it from a different state perspective and also on a grand perspective and other than a micro.
Okay, well, that sounds helpful. Thank you. Have you attended any of the meetings?
I have not, only because I'm actually busy with coaching basketball at the moment and then also sometimes I stay late for work because I also do some business as well on the West Coast, so I'm kind of forced to stay after. I mean, I would love to, I do watch as much as I can or read up on it the next day, but that's as much as I can do.
Okay, so you've been following what they're doing?
Mm-hmm, I have.
Okay, good, thank you.
Growing up in Long Meadow, I know you know a lot about the conservation area, I'm sure. There's some beautiful spots that most people don't even know about and I appreciate you wanting to come forward and protect them. Thank you very much for, and we'll be voting on you next session.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
C. Pericolosi for Parks and Rec.
My name's Craig Pericolosi, 97 Cooley Drive in Long Meadow. So this all started when I reached out to the Parks Department Director to show some interest and change some of the bylaws. I have twin daughters that are currently engaged in multiple sports, mainly over at Wolf Swamp. So we've been really in tune with the changes of Wolf Swamp and the field conditions and everything. But some of their travel softball and some of their travel soccer, we've been to many fields and we noticed, I noticed that some of the sponsorship, that some of these fields have the signs. So I just presented this via email to the Director. So we've been going back and forth since the summer. During that, I reached out to Mark via email, never met, but, and we went back and forth kind emails and he just said that there was a possibility that there's an opening. I showed interest in the opening because I'm living in Long Meadow with the twin girls, 12 and very active, I see many more years of them playing on these fields. So the Park Department is a big interest because my kids are always at Bliss Field, they're at Wolf Swamp Field, we're down to conservation, so we're always outside, we're a big, active family. I just thought this would be an opportunity to give back, stay in tune with what's going on with the community.
Questions? Mark?
This is Craig, thank you, thank you for applying. I guess I'm interested in what your thoughts are about Wolf Swamp Field.
So, so we had the vote last, was it six, eight months? Yeah, eight months ago, whatever. And from there, it seemed like it went dormant and there was no response. We would sit at the field and I didn't hear anything and there's, there's always a gossip of the parents and people talking about it. So, you know, I always thought it's a great opportunity to redo that field. It's, you have other towns coming there and it's kind of a little bit of an embarrassment that this town has a field in that condition. My daughters have gotten hurt on that field, so when this came up that we were going to improve the fields, I was all for it. The process of being slow and not in tune to what was going on was just a little gray for me. I was kind of taken back that we haven't heard anything. I always thought that redesign it the way it is, maybe expand that parking lot, maybe expand it over to the dirt field or where you always see the ATVs, but the layout works. It seems like always, we're able to get our kids out there in field hockey, we're able to get them out there in lacrosse and especially soccer. My kids don't play baseball, so I'm not really partaking in the baseball timeline, but when we're there, there's always empty fields. It doesn't seem to be overwhelmed with people waiting to get on the field. So it just seemed like, let's redo what was there with a nice, nice format, a nice layout. I heard from Mark that you guys met last week and had some interesting designs and you're moving forward with some opportunities and some designs in your next session, so it sounds good. I look forward to hearing back from you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. You're going to find it's a very interesting group and a lot's happening between the Wolf Swamp and the long-term field. You're coming in at a very busy time, so thank you for your volunteering.
Absolutely. Thank you. Have a good night.
Lynn, you want to give us your town manager report now?
Sure. Okay, so I am pleased to announce that the Fire Department was successful in securing another Students Awareness of Fire Education or SAFE grant and they also received the Senior SAFE Grant Program again this year. This allows them to conduct fire safety classes in schools and programs for the senior population. The funding also supports a lot of the community outreach that they do. The LED streetlight conversion project, Arden Engineering has been awarded the installation contract. The LED fixtures for the Cobra Head lights should be delivered in March. Once those are delivered, the installer will then inventory all the items and set an installation schedule. We are still on task to meet the May deadline for the grant, or I'm sorry, for the MEPC project. The decorative fixtures have been ordered, they're expected to be delivered by the end of March or early April, so this will line up nicely with Arden's installation. And the work to apply the rate changes is going to start, but won't be submitted until after installation, but there's a lot of legwork that has to happen leading up to that. The Police Chief search, so the job posting was released last Thursday. The position will be advertised internally for about 15 days and then upon closing of the job posting, internal applicants will be reviewed and an assessment process will begin, so I'll keep you updated as that moves along. We, I did, as an update to this, I did work out a last day for Chief Stankowitz, which will be February 29th. And immediately following that, Captain Fontaine will be appointed interim Police Chief while we conduct this search process. Further on the report here, the DPW, new DPW facility in the Adult Center, so the steel at the DPW site has been fully installed. Clerk of the Works for both DPW and Adult Center project has been retained. He's going to be on-site at each project every day now. Steel is fully erected at the Adult Center, concrete decking work has started. If you've gone by, you've noticed some white tenting that's up, that's to let the concrete cure in this cold temperature, they're heating it so that it actually can set. So new project completion schedules are being developed, but both projects will still be completed in the fall of this year. And to HR-related announcements or updates, the Long Meadow Human Resources created a Long Meadow HR LinkedIn account to help share and promote town of Long Meadow employment opportunities, just to help grow our network. If you have a LinkedIn account, go in there and follow it or share some of our job postings. And the town's HR Director, Erica Chalinas, passed her Society for Human Resource Management certification test, so she now is SHRM SCP certified. This is a pretty impressive credential for her to carry and for the town to have an employee in their HR department with these credentials is pretty extraordinary. There's not a lot of municipal HR directors in our area that have this, so that's, you know, well done to Erica and I'm glad that the town will benefit from it. She, this was a 12-week course that she took, hosted by Westfield State, and then there was an exam that followed. That's it for my report.
Any questions?
Well, I just, a couple of comments. One is that, you know, like, when an organization, when the HR department isn't trusted or isn't doing a good job, it really affects the whole group and so that's really a great thing that our HR department's moving forward and getting that kind of training. It's good we can support that. Because she didn't pay for it herself, we paid for it, right? For the training?
Yes.
Good, yeah. The other thing is I noticed in the materials we got that, in terms of the Adult Center, that they've, they've raised $430,000 to offset the costs of certain parts of it and I'm hoping that maybe another member of the Select Board could match that. You're the one talking about it. I thought you brought your checkbook with you, Tom. Yeah, I'm sure you, you probably already don't need it, I'm sure you do. But yeah, $430,000, that's really great, that's good news, I want to share that.
Any other questions, Mark?
Just a quick comment and some more for the Select Board in conjunction with the streetlight project, that we've gotten a few emails from people who are starting to point out to us places in town that don't have streetlights. I'd just like to comment that the current streetlight project essentially is replacing the lights, you know, literally taking out the bulbs and putting in a new bulb or whatever it is, but I think the Select Board needs to develop a process because I was surprised at the number of people who apparently would like streetlights on their, on their street and once we own them, it really comes down to us, how much do we have to spend for it and do we want to spend it and is it needed and does the community supporters or one person who wants to hustle it up or whatever it is, but I think at some point we got to put that on an agenda and talk about it.
We could have that as one of the policies. We do have a streetlight policy, which has to be updated, I'm sure. Everything needs to be updated, our policies. So we could put that in the, one of the next agendas.
So Mark, you're talking about a systematic plan of what streets and how it would progress?
What we're doing right now is there's a street light there, we're either taking it down and replacing it or pulling out the guts and replacing it. This is people who say, like, I'll tell you, outside my house, there was a light there for about eight months, 10 years ago, and it got put up and then it got taken down. The street's very dark. You know, I'm sure there are a lot of places like that in town that may have, you know, 10 or 15 houses between streetlights and people said, can you add a street light? So it would be the intermittent street light that might be added.
So we should have a systematic plan?
I think, I don't know if we need a plan, I think if nothing else, we need a procedure for the requests and for reviewing and for approving them. Now, you know, do we do it one by one or do you say, you know, we're looking at it all over the next three months and we're going to go in one fell swoop? I don't know the process, Tom, but, you know, it needs to be a process as opposed to just random requests.
Right, I agree with that. Yeah, it's systematic, because you don't, you know, it's going to create conflict because some people like the dark of the suburbs and other people want the light, you know, so it's a tricky thing.
The process has to take that into account somehow.
If they're Cobra Heads, we'd have to work with Eversource, right? Presumably if it's a Cobra Head, it probably has all utilities on it. If it's a decorative, no.
No, no, no. It, it's all, if there's a poll, believe it or not, I mean, there's a utility poll that's an Eversource- an Eversource or Verizon poll. You can put any, we have a lot of polls with decorative lights on them, you know? So, you know, it's a matter of, in my opinion, and again, we'll discuss this at some point, is, you know, if the street's all Cobra Heads, you put in a Cobra Head. If the street's all decorative and somebody wants one, you probably put in another decorative, you know, kind of thing. And it doesn't matter whether they're utility poles or not. We have the right to put streetlights on a utility pole by sending a letter to Eversource and Verizon saying, you know, that utility pole, we're putting a light on it. And now, you know, Eversource may have to provide what's called a drop, a wire to us for us to connect to. But if we want to do that, you know, then it's our decision to do it.
I guess I have one more question. In the future, could we have lights that are just independent, that collect solar and then go on and off from solar so there would be no cost in terms of electricity?
Absolutely. All we've got to do is buy them and pay for them and install them, right?
Yeah. Because that would be another thing to think about, about new lights. If we could, you know, charge Richard's account.
Just so you know, Tom, right now, I mean, once we convert to LEDs and we're going to spend a good deal of cash to do that, capital to do it, the operating costs of these lights are pretty low, you know? And it gets very difficult to justify replacing a LED lamp fixture with a solar lamp fixture unless you've got either a very low cost or you've got to go out and spend a lot of money to replace the fixture anyway.
Yeah. But for a side street, an LED, you know, with a solar powered might really meet the needs. But yeah, on a main street, that's probably not going to work. You're right.
My understanding is that the planning board's also looking at a bylaw in regards to dark nights, dark skies and things like that. And that'll be talked about on Wednesday. So, it'll be interesting to, you know, deal with all these issues at the same time this year.
Should we, should we have made sure that light fixtures we've already bought meet their requirements?
I think it does.
I'm pretty sure they do.
I'm pretty sure they do, too. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Lynn? I actually, this, we actually do have a chair report. I have a show and tell I brought. I went to the building committee meeting in which they were deciding colors. And I don't know if you'll be able to get a good shot of this, but I showed this to everyone on the select board. This is what the new adult center is pretty much going to look like, including the flowering trees. Everyone was mocking that. So, it's going to be beautiful. And as Tom said, there's a private group in town that's raised almost $450,000 and that's for extras. And when you say what is extras, it's defibrillators on each of the floors. It's being able to get a pool table. It's extra conservation. So, it's extras that aren't in the basic purchase of the building and furnishing of the building. Right now, there's an outstanding grant. The Presley Blake family has put a matching grant up there. And if anyone's ready to, even a small amount of money, willing to contribute, it will help, you know, go for that matching grant. So, if you have any interest, you can contact Mary Beth Bergeron. Or if you don't have that contact information, send me an email and I'll forward it to them. The group is going to have a website soon. They don't quite have it yet, but that should be up and going real soon. Also, this year is the 150th anniversary. It's our 150th Memorial Day program. That will happen at Long Meadow Days. And that's pretty special. And I know our Bets agent's really working on that. Lena's putting together quite a program. But if you have things at home or historic memorabilia or something from your Long Meadow veteran, you might want to call Lena and let her know about it. We're going to miss Chief Stankowitz. And 37 years he's been here. And that's a long time, 37 years, five years as chief. And he's left quite a legacy, whether it was the Regional Dispatch that's open, that's really an amazing organization across the Commonwealth. They've done an amazing job with that Regional Dispatch. And also the accreditation, we're the only Hampton County Police Department that's accredited. And that's, that's a great achievement. So, we're going to miss Chief Stankowitz. And that's all I had for today.
Marie, could I just, there's one more thing I should have made earlier in the comments, is that on February 15th, which is coming up, it'll actually be the 200th birthday of Susan B. Anthony. And it also will have the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, what they call the Susan B. Anthony Amendment, which is the right for women to vote in this country. So, the 15th, you know, if you want to celebrate, oh, I think women should all be out celebrating.
And pulling papers to be a woman on the select board again.
That's right. The right to vote, the right to run.
It's not as scary as it looks. All right. Do we have a motion to approve minutes?
Sure.
Oh, it is scarier than it looks?
No.
I want whatever you're on tonight.
Okay.
I move we approve the minutes of the January 21st meeting of the select board.
Second.
Regular meeting of the select board.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I move we approve the January 21st meeting minutes of the joint select board planning board meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great. Yes.
Yeah, just for a public relations thing, about two days ago, Marie Angelides couldn't hardly talk. She has, she has come roaring back like the Energizer Blending. She is, she was very ill over the weekend, folks, so.
Just wait a one hour, I'm handing you the gavel and I'm collapsing.
So, we're seeing if she's going to make it through the evening, so.
Are you here for a presentation? I thought we would jump so you wouldn't have to wait any longer.
Hi, I'm Amy Nelson. I'm the Assistant Treasurer and Collector. And I'm just here to present the Treasurer's quarterly report for October to December 2019. And so, in this quarter, the town held no investments over the five-year limit. All individual bank balances were under $5 million balance provision with the exception of three banks that hold bond proceeds. So, those are allowed an $8 million provision for the investment policy. All the banks, banks received the highest safety rating of green from Vera Bank. And all the accounts were fully insured or secured. There was a borrowing in October for $14,840,000 for the Council on Aging, the LED streetlights, the morning side pulver and a portion of the landfill cap. These bond proceeds and the associated bond premiums were put into a new account with Munson Savings as well as into an existing account with Country Savings at 2% and 1.98%. To avoid arbitrage, we cannot earn more than 2% on these bond proceeds. And interest rates have declined on most accounts. The largest decreases were with People's United, which is formerly United Bank, Country Bank, Adams Savings Bank and MMDT. A CD with Country Bank matured and CD rates were not favorable. So, we transferred just over $523,000 to MMDT, which was paying 1.98% at the time. The interest accumulating on bond proceeds will be allocated into the town's general fund, the water fund and sewer fund. The interest on all the bond proceeds for the quarter was $93,415. The investment income earned on the OPEB pension reserves for the quarter was $117,714. And overall, the town had two deposits into the state retirees' benefits trust fund totaling And as of December 31st, 2019, the balance in the state retirees' benefit trust fund is $2,741,989. This represents an increase of $293,668 in earnings since inception 13 months prior. So, the fund had a 16.57% rate of return for the calendar year of 2019. And then there was a net increase of $12,477,036 in cash and investments for the quarter. And that was a result of the new bond proceeds.
Oh.
And that's it.
Sounds like things are going well.
Yes.
Any questions? Mark?
I don't know, Amy, if this is for you or Paul, but the pension reserve, it says in the state retirees' benefits trust fund, we deposited 2.5 million, give or take. That's not this year. That's our cumulative.
That's cumulative for the 13 months that was open.
Okay. So, that's essentially last year's payment in.
Right.
Okay. Do we do it monthly deposit?
No, actually, we do it right after about the halfway point in the fiscal year. So, there should be a deposit going in, probably in February, I would imagine, of 600 and some odd thousand dollars. So, that next quarterly report, you would see that number jump to, you know, somewhere, you know, 3.3, 3.4 million dollars. Hopefully, we can maintain that rate of return. You know, it's a nice little rate of return that we've got for the year. We'll keep our fingers crossed. And that certainly will help our OPEB liability in the long run.
And that was my other question. So, this is OPEB.
These are the OPEB funds that we're now investing with the state as opposed to internal vesting in CDs.
So, Paul, I know you do a good job to try to get the best interest rates. So, they dropped and is that pretty much universal or are we just going to have to wait until interest rates go back up?
It's been universal. All the banks have lowered their short-term rates, you know, as Amy has said, at least half a percentage point.
Yeah.
So, it's nothing new, just to the town of Long Meadow. It's basically reasonably and probably nationwide that everything is going in that direction at this point in time.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So, currently, we have about 2.7 million in that OPEB trust fund.
Right.
And then with deposits next year, it'll be somewhere up above 3 million. What was the recommended number that we should have in there?
21? 36? 36, no.
Certainly, the recommended number is equal to our unfunded liabilities. So, I don't know if you're after that number, which would be around 30 million.
Right, right. But is there a smaller number?
There was a 5 million before we withdraw.
There's a 5 million number in the policy that stated that we would not withdraw from that fund until we had at least $5 million.
Have we done that?
We have not withdrawn from that.
Is that our policy or is that a state policy?
It is our policy.
Thank you.
Richard?
Yeah, Mark and I read an OPEB breakout session in Boston. And I was quite amazed at the high percentage of the people in attendance that are not only putting money away, but how many of them actually had a setup with trust funds. So, the movement is slowly, progressively moving towards the Commonwealth.
Right.
And it was, what, maybe 30, 40 people?
I was going to say, we're no longer one of the eight, not one of the 35 smartest or toughest communities in the country.
And Mark's head didn't even explode when they said all that. So, it was interesting. But it was a pretty good turnout. By the way, I went up and talked to ladies after that because that session really needs to be moved up on the floor so we can have it in a classroom. Because it's very hard to hear anyone in there. If you ask a question, nobody could hear it. So, but apparently, it's gaining, it's fairly popular now. It's getting more popular. People are more aware of it. I guess, Mark, because the totals are so overwhelming. And of course, her comments were, the state's not going to bail you out because they've got to worry about bailing themselves out. She said, they're in just the same problem that we've got in all those small communities. So, it's building.
Yeah, the session Richard and I were at was kind of split 50/50 or whatever, between OPEB and pensions. I took an opportunity afterwards to go to their booth and speak to them a little bit more extensively. And one of the things I was trying to scout out was the pension side of it. I think OPEB, although we're well underfunded, we've got the process under control and we know what we need to do. But pensions were, you know, my bias is that we're at the mercy of the Hampton County Pension Board that's doing it, not the best job that I would like to see done. And it was interesting that one of the things that the folks there suggested was split your salary, split your payroll group and say, okay, people who are in the, you know, currently employed, they go through Hampton County Retirement Board, but take any new employee and do it separately. Fund it through this, whether it's the state retirement pension trust fund or some other way. And, you know, it's not an immediate solution, but over the next 25 years, you dig yourself out of the problem of the Hampton County Retirement Board. When we went over the numbers and they had also heard of the Hampton County Retirement Board's, you know, performance, they said it was lagging in the performance compared to other similar organizations. And I just think, you know, we're way off topic here, but I think that we ought to, at some point, have a discussion about that. And these folks are, they're consultants, they work for a nonprofit. I mean, it's not like they're trying to sell us something. But it was pretty interesting to talk about the options because what they have is, and I think they are smarter than us, but they're not just smarter than us, they look at hundreds and hundreds of communities around the country. And they can tell us all the tricks and trades and things that people do to try to help fund their obligations. And certainly, you know, they're saying if you're funding with an organization that's not pulling their weight, there are opportunities around it.
Thank you. I have a question to bond, Chris. First of all, are you happy with our policies, Paul, that we have on investments and?
Yes, I think they have not been problematic. We made the adjustment years ago. There was, there's a policy in place that Amy, who was the first one or one of them, that we don't have any more than $5 million in what bank. Well, when we originally borrowed for this building, who knows how many years, probably around 2011, because we also got hit with the snowstorm, you know, we had borrowed, I think, like 24 million originally. Then two years later, and, you know, we expended some during the time. Two years later, we borrowed the remaining 20 million. We had a $10 million loan outstanding for payment of the cleanup process of the storm. We were in a position where we were almost going to any bank because of the policy and taking ridiculously low interest rates as far as our return. So, we did address that a little bit, maybe a little bit later in the game than we should have. But we did address it and we raised that minimally to $8 million. So, that, you know, they're able to go out now and put money in two or three, four different banks that were still getting pretty decent returns. So, I'm comfortable with those amounts at this point in time. We would have to see how it works out. At the time, we borrow, if we do borrow, when a middle school comes online, we'd probably be borrowing in at that point in time 40, 50 million. And we would just have to see if that $8 million limitation is a good limit at that point in time or can we gain additional interest revenue by putting in only a few banks. But I think for our current cash flow purposes and everything like that, we're fine at this point in time.
What about the bond proceeds? Do you think we should be putting together a policy where we take some of those proceeds, whether we put it in OPEB or, you know, something else that, another financial goal that we have, start to nibble away at something?
If anything, I would probably say that they go towards capital. And maybe they could be put into, a certain portion could be put into the capital stabilization fund.
Okay.
Or even the operational stabilization fund. I don't think they should be expended right away. You know, when we look at next year's free cash, and I allude to it in my report, we have a certain amount of money, $450,000, that would be, is the rough number, that I'm anticipating in revenues in excess of our budget. Half of that money is basically coming from these bond proceeds, the interest on the bond proceeds. So, you know, that money is great right now. It will dissipate over time as these bond proceeds are done with. However, you know, next year's free cash in the absence of that quarter of $1,300,000 is going to be a smaller amount as we get tighter and tighter into the budget. So, I would say it's not a bad idea to put some of it away towards capital and/or the operational stabilization fund.
Since we're sort of low on the operational stabilization percentage-wise, according to Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, would that be where you would recommend we put it, in the stabilization fund?
Yes, I would say that unless there's a capital need, that's immediate in the fall. Because this will also turn up to be next year's, a portion of next year's free cash. So, if there was an immediate need in capital, obviously, we could take it, again, because it's going to end up in free cash, we could finance that, depending on the amount, finance that capital project via free cash. And if not a capital project, put, you know, a portion of it in the operational stabilization fund, you know, automatically. Whether it's over the $500,000 policy that the select board have or not, that some of it actually go in there automatically.
Maybe could you put up a draft? Maybe could you put up a draft, so for maybe a future agenda, we could talk about a policy on the bond proceeds, and then sort of hash it out.
Okay.
Any other questions for her? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's always nice to get good news.
Thanks. Have a good one.
I'm sure Cheryl really missed out on this. She loves doing presentations.
I'm sure she's live streaming it, so she doesn't miss anything.
I'm sure.
Actually, I'm gonna jump down to item four, which is goal-setting, financial discussion, and we're not really gonna have that discussion right now, but I just wanted to, since we have been talking about OPEB, and now we're talking about policy, possibly on bond proceeds, I sent out a, I did it on Friday, which is late for her packet, because Lynn's really organized us. So I was wondering if everyone could just sort of look at what I wrote together at 30,000 feet. I showed it to Paul to see if I was missing any of our financial goals, but we'll put that on a future agenda where we'll try to do some goal-setting, and, because we really need to put goals together the next few months before, because we'll need goals for evaluation of Lynn, and this was just an idea I had. So I just wanted everyone to take a look at it, and anything else you could think that you want to add to that. I might send that also to Finance and see if they have some idea of something else we should be putting on that general goals at 30,000. Everyone just got an email on that. All right, let's go back to, let's see, the, since we're talking budget, do you want to tell us a little bit about the budget? Lynn or Paul, who's gonna tell us about that?
Well, I guess, I was gonna allude to the budget as part of the ending of my update for FY '20 and '21, so I don't know if you want me to jump into that financial report that I prepared?
Sure.
Okay. There was a memo that I sent in for the packet, dealing with where we are in FY '20, and where I foresee some FY '21 factors, and how the budget process is going with Lynn and myself. Right now, in FY '20, I'm expecting our operational revenues to exceed the budget, as I had said earlier, 450, the actual amount is $465,000. Again, half of this, about half of that money will be the excess bond proceed interest earnings that will be, that will earn throughout the end of the fiscal year. There is an estimated receipt report, I don't know if you want to put that, Lynn, I believe it should be in there.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
But right now, we're at $153,000, $153,000 through the end, towards the end of January of excess appropriations from just bond proceeds alone. We have already met our goal for investment income for the year. At the end of January, we, you know, we had set up $175,000 was the estimated yearly amount of interest revenue that we received, so we're also pretty, doing pretty good because of cash flow. And the high interest rates, the higher than, I mean, from a couple of years ago, the interest rates are much higher than they were. So there's a good portion of money that's going to be in excess, only because it's just interest revenue and we have great cash flow. The other areas that we're doing pretty good on, I think motor vehicle excise taxes, we'll be doing pretty good on. We're ahead of last year's pace at this point in time. Unfortunately, people will be getting their tax, motor vehicle excise tax bill in the mail within the next week or so.
Got mine yesterday.
Oh, you got it already, okay. That first commitment is usually the biggest one, it's about $2 million of the 2.5 million dollars that we're anticipating. And that motor vehicle excise tax bill was about $30,000 more than its counterpart a year ago. So again, these trends are all looking pretty good. The only area that I'm somewhat, I am concerned with is the park and rec revolving account. They normally pay back their appropriation for the daycare salaries. That will not meet its goal, but at the same time, we do have an appropriation for those daycare salaries, and the expenditure amount will be under budget too, so it'll kind of be an even offset. Ambulance revenues continue to be strong. We're ahead of last year's pace by about $60,000. We have almost $560,000 already collected this year. We had a goal of 845,000, it looks like, for the ambulance revenues will be exceeding $1 million by the time the end of the fiscal year rolls around. Another area that I, another area that I have a serious concern with is our water estimated receipts. We are somewhat behind last year's pace, and depending on the next commitment that we will be sending out in early March, we'll be doing the readings very shortly, unless that commitment is substantially higher than last year's counterpart, we could end up about $200,000 behind in revenues of the, in the water department. And that's kind of a lot of money, on a, almost, well, it's about a $2.8 million budget per se. Sewer is kind of right on target, not so bad there. Solid waste recycling is right on target, and the stormwater fee is on target too. So with regard to the revenues for FY '20, again, we have a few areas that are kind of bringing us down slightly, but more positive news comes out of the revenue side than the negative. With regard to the expenditures in FY '20, there's certainly some areas of concern. The Fire Chiefs has kept you informed in his monthly report about his overtime budget. Legal expenses at this point in time, even though we put in an additional $125,000 for the legal ramifications of the Tennessee gas pipeline and/or the DPW site, we will probably need to go to town meeting for both of those to supplement. You know, I'm just not sure of the amounts, but those are definitely going to be needing some supplemental money. We currently have about $395,000 in free cash. I can easily see that money being eaten up. A lot probably will depend on how the rest of the winter goes. We normally have a snow and ice deficit. It is probably nil at this point in time, but, you know, technically, we have about, you know, say, two more months worth of winter. There will be some amount of money that will be returned back from the liability insurance and employee benefit section. Our unemployment costs are very low at this point in time. We appropriate about $100,000 a year, we've maybe spent $20,000. We do not have a very big roster of unemployment claims at this point in time, which is good. And our liability insurance at this point in time is also, has a positive number, and I do not anticipate any more large bills comes in. There might be a couple minor changes, because we're buying new vehicles or something like that, but they'll be minor, so I could anticipate maybe $100,000 being returned back from those two, those two line items. Having said all that, again, I think I had made an estimate of anywhere between $750,000 to a $1 million range in next year's free cash. That is a fairly normal amount of money in free cash from a historical perspective. And again, but it can go quickly should we get hit with something that is not really Going into next fiscal year, and I've also provided all the reserve balances as of January 31st, 2020, on my report, you can see that, you know, free cash is 395,000, the operational stabilization fund is 4.1, you know, so on and so forth. There is some money in the capital stabilization fund. I am, as I said, worried about the water, it's $282,000. If we get, if we do not make the revenue projections and don't have large turnbacks, that number is gonna be very, very close to zero at the end of FY '20. For FY '21, you may recall that we started the year with a projected deficit of $677,000. Of that, 677, $373,000 was the initiative of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, only to raise 1.75 of the 2.5% allowed in the Proposition 2.5. A couple of things have happened over the last three or four months, some of which have been positive, some of which have not been positive. You know, the first one was, we got our new growth certified after that projection was made. The new growth for FY '20, which carry forward into FY '21, was $110,000 greater, so that was good news at the time. Our pension assessment, however, was $376,000, which is about $123,000 greater than we had anticipated. So easy come, easy go. The governor's state aid for Long Meadow was about $86,000 less than we had anticipated. But at the same time, the school department's budget, as it's being proposed right now, was $137,000 less than we had budgeted back in, or projected back in October. Normally, more of those are on the positive side, as opposed to offsetting each other. So it's making for FY '21 to be a very, probably a very tough year for Lynn and I to come forward with a balanced budget. I wouldn't say balanced budget, but a budget that meets all your directives. We can produce a balanced budget, we can produce a budget that will have excess, but to meet all those directives is going to be, I'll be blunt to just say near, it's gonna be impossible, unless we start seeing some service cuts. The last bit of information that we really need for FY '21 is the Scantic Valley health insurance rates. Those will be set on February 19th. If those come in positive, it will be certainly helpful to help us meet all those goals. So we'll keep our fingers crossed in that regard. Overall, the budget request came in well over $1 million than what we had anticipated, so there were a lot of additional requests that came in, that Lynn and I had to look at and say, you know, is that reasonable? Yes, no, maybe, some of them are, some of them are, a lot of them are, you know, we should be doing this, but obviously, we can't do everything, we have a finite amount of money. The one thing in FY 2021 that we were not anticipating, if you had read the front page of the reminder last week, was dealing with recyclables. There's a $158,000 budget line item in the recycling enterprise fund that was not there last year, to start paying for the disposal of recyclables. No longer will we be, bring them down to the MRF for free, there will be a cost to us. We did not anticipate that. So that is, that is adding to the challenge that we have going on. Again, Lynn and I are working through some of these things, you know, we're looking at the initiatives that the Select Board has put forward with regard to, you know, the capital to go up a quarter of a percent. You know, the OPEB at $500,000, a quarter of a million to go into the operational stabilization fund. We have a council on aging center that's going to be open, that is gonna have additional, or need additional custodial care. We're going to have a swamp fields that are going to be done, that are going to be needing more attention, whether through labor and/or fertilizer. It's just, like I said, it's going to be tough for us to meet all those goals. Also, request for, you know, some additional EMTs, which would also bring in revenue that is, you know, those are under consideration. So if there's, if there's any discussion on the FY '21, or any recommendations by the Select Board for FY '21 to help us out, you know, that would be helpful as to which initiatives are maybe less important than other ones, and I don't know if the Board will, wants to have that discussion at this point in time, but that's, that's the, that's what Lynn and I are confronted with at this point in time. You know, certainly, we can come in with a number that meets all the initiatives, but there's going to be a loss of service. And while it may not be written in all the information with regard to the budget, but I do believe level of service minimally was, was initiative also of the Select Board. I don't think anybody wants to see any cuts in levels of services, unless they're not needed, obviously. However, I don't think we have any of those. So it's kind of where we are at this point in time. I did, just FYI, some other information that I had put in here, going back to the retirement assessment and our large increase, I had provided a 10-year history, or longer than a 10-year history, of what our Hampton County pension assessments look like, and even though it did go up 10% in FY, projected for FY '22, which I have listed as '21, you can see that the history has been favorable for the town of Long Meadow. The other thing that I looked at, Marie, you and me to go back and look at the numbers, I didn't see anything in the numbers. I will say also, the number that we presented to the Hampton County Retirement Board was actually less than the amount of actual wages attributable to pensions that we had in FY 2019. So even though Stephen was off the payroll, the COLAs and everything, so on and so forth, kind of very easily ate that up. So we did go back and look at that, and I do track what our, what our actual, or what the number we do provide to the Hampton County is in the fall, and I do look at that at the end of the fiscal year, that it's attributable to see exactly where we stand. So that tidbit of information stuck out, that it was about, in FY '19, it was about $400,000 higher than what we actually submitted in October to the retirement system.
Mark?
Yeah, Paul, if the pension is going up 10.1%, how does that jive with their comment that said, you know, what they charge us is going up 8%? So what's the extra?
The 8% is the bottom line of theirs, Mark. It is distributed amongst all the participants.
But each, any individual?
Any individual can go up and down. That way, you know, if we look at the prior years, it only went up 5.21, somebody else's might have went up 7 or 8, it might have went up 9%. So it's the individual percentage that we take of their, of their bottom line budget. Their bottom line budget goes up 8%, but we share a percentage of that, and our percentage went up this time around, as compared to the other communities.
Any other questions for Paul? I had a question about the budget schedule. So when do we meet with the school committee?
Your next meeting.
Your next meeting.
I believe it's the 18th. You have a joint meeting with the school committee and a finance committee meeting. The school committee is doing their presentation to you folks, and the finance committee will be here also, so it saves the school committee from doing it twice, but that is the schedule for the 18th.
And when do you bring the budget to us?
The budget to you is due just prior to the March 3rd or 4th meeting, whatever that Monday, the first Monday is in, or maybe in the second. Whatever that first Monday is in March, it will be part of the packet that goes out the Friday before, so right at the end of February.
In the February, we get it, and we discuss it at that first meeting in March.
Yes, right.
All right, and so we need to set up some meetings to go over the budget as a Select Board. Usually, we do that.
Various chairs have done it in various fashions, but yes, there's probably a good idea to set something up in addition to the regularly scheduled meetings.
So I want everyone's dates the second week in March.
I know.
So everyone could send me those before the end of the evening, then we'll set up. Do you think two meetings, three meetings, oh, how difficult is this gonna be?
It all depends if Lynn's still on the honeymoon here or not. You know, it's easier to cancel them as opposed to
That's true.
Not have them available and have to wait two and three days to get them in. I would hope it would take, you know, the discussion would happen on that first Monday to a certain degree. I would hope, you know, if you gave it some reasonable time, two nights would be adequate. Again, you may call in certain departments just to see what's going on in their department, how this impacts, just to learn about some of the more detailed information within their department. But if you did two, certainly, you have that fall, in the week prior to the next meeting, because it would be anticipated that it would be approved on March, if I can see correctly over there, March 16th?
Okay.
I believe is the date that is anticipated to be approved by the Select Board, and subsequently sent to the Finance Committee after that.
And when do we see capital?
Capital, I believe, is also meant on the 18th, also, to do their presentation.
Busy time. Is everyone here on the 18th, or is that a holiday vacation week?
It's a Tuesday night. It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, it is a school vacation week, it is a Tuesday night.
What, February?
February, yeah, this month.
Yeah, is every, Mark, are you around, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, and?
But that's March 9th, that Monday, you know, we have a meeting the week before.
Right, so that week, we're looking for three meetings during the week of March 9th.
Yeah.
And so we could, and if there's any, after everyone sees the budget, if there's a specific department you would like to have come in front of us, let us know. department you would like to have come in front of us, let us know. And when does the finance committee get it? The same time, right?
Well, the finance, the finance committee will get the town manager's budget the same time that is given to you.
So we could always apply that to our meeting.
They, they will be here, yeah, they can, they're more than welcome to come, but again, they're interested in the final product. Certainly, they will have discussions. I mean, I think that they're going to be a little more aggressive. They already started to talk about their budget schedule and, and the warrant process. They want a, a copy of the, minimally, the listing of potential warrant articles that will be proposed. And between Deb and myself, we do have, we do have a listing of those warrant articles already. Deb has started a draft on the warrant. We will give those to them for their meeting on February 18th also. It'll be provided to you folks. Just, it won't be, it may, it may or may not be in the form of a draft budget, but it minimally will have the listing afterwards of any warrant article that has not been written. So, but that's, in those three meetings that you have in that off week in March, you know, those should all be addressed also probably. You know, the more you can do during those couple of meetings, so it doesn't absorb the whole meeting of March 16th, the better.
Oh, yeah, definitely. So we don't run into a problem.
Right, right. Because it is, it is a tight schedule for the finance committee also. Basically, they, they have about two weeks to make their recommendation. You know, they, I think they would like more time, but you know, it is what it is, working back from the printer and meeting all the other things that have to be done, getting it allowed into the hands of the residents by mid-May and so on and so forth.
Any other questions on the budget? I'll call the chair of the finance committee and touch base with them.
Well, the only other thing is with the water revenues, you know, I know it was a while back ago, there was some, some collections that weren't happening. Is, what's the concern with revenue? Is it people aren't paying?
No, I, I just, we probably had a rainy season.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the, and I honestly didn't look at the accounts receivable, but I don't believe that's the case. I just think we had a rainy season, and it's, it's somewhat seasonal in nature because of the rain.
We sold less water.
Right. People are watering their lawns less when it's raining, you know?
Yeah, right, okay.
Which brings up an important point, is we were talking about having a meeting on the water rates beginning of March. Everything's being jammed in those two weeks. When do we have to make a decision on the water rates?
The water rates do not have to be done until the end of June.
Oh, okay.
At this point in time. You know, there was a policy in place that the select board had adhered to that you wanted to have the rates set prior to anybody consuming any water during the period in which they be charged. So it meant, basically, we're doing a meter reading in February, that's going to be for a March reading, that you were almost, had to have it done by February 1st. You've gotten away from that, and you are now, you're now setting rates, you can go setting rates as far as even into early July. It would just have to be done before we do the first commitment in September of 2020 would be, really be the deadline, but you know, that would even be up until mid, mid-July.
But I think we also wanted to talk about the water quality.
Well, water quality, right, that was certainly a different issue.
Do you want to talk at the end of March? Do you think they'll be ready for that at the end of March, or should we look at beginning of April? What do you think, Lynn?
I think beginning of April, just knowing you're going to have some pretty hefty March meetings.
Okay.
I'm happy to schedule them for that first meeting in April.
All right. So we'll have that, and we'll advertise it as water, and so we're commissioners too, and let the board of health know. All right, so we're, we're moving along. Now, did you want us to give you an idea of priorities?
It'd be great if you could. I, I see somebody shaking their head this way.
Well, I know that the 500 OPEB was a bit of a bend for you to give you a little breathing room, but you've already included that.
We
Well, they cut it back from the year, last year or two.
No, we cut it last year, yeah, we, we put in more than 500.
Right, I, I'll say this though, Rich, you, you cut it, but you then at the same time put in another policy to put $250,000 into the operational stabilization fund. So those, the amount, the amount that would have went in for FY '21, whether it just went into OPEB singularly, relatively equates to the amount that you're committing in FY '21 now with 500 and 250,000.
Yeah, but I, Richard didn't do that, though.
Yeah, Richard was on the case.
Yeah, I was, I was against that.
I think Richard's been a bad boy.
Yeah, Richard, Richard was not part of that, that ripoff.
So I gather you don't want to see a bend on the
Whatever the board wishes are, Marie.
Okay, so right now, we're putting money in, 250 in the stabilization fund.
250 stabilization.
And how much money is being additionally added to capital this year?
Well, it's going to depend on the final number. At this point in time, I have it an eighth of a percent instead of a quarter.
And which is how much more?
About $80,000.
Yeah. And you want us to
And I would make up the difference with an available amount that's in the capital stabilization fund. It would come out of a different source. So it, it would get ample money, but it would not be funded through taxation per se. It would be coming out of reserves. Something would be coming out of reserves.
So that's your preference? So if you had, if you were going to make your CFO recommendation to the board on what we would do?
I have to make my CFO recommendations to the town manager.
Yes, to the town manager. Lynn, your recommendation to the board, is there something you prefer us to consider?
My CFO recommendation to the town manager would be
It will listen.
That we ease off on the, maybe the 1.75 and cut that, meet the 2%, but maybe do it 2.125 instead of 2.2.
Oh, you're talking about
Sorry, about 1.875, which is right in between the goal of last year of 2 and next year's goal of 1.75.
You're talking about revenues raised.
I'm talking about revenue raised.
So bring the tax up.
Bring, bring the, the amount that you're not levying down from 373,000 to, you know, somewhere, oh, 300,000? It would still be, in FY '20, it was 2% of the two, of the two and a half, and it was about 244,000. So if we jumped an eighth of a percentage instead of a quarter, it would bring it up to like 300,000 instead of 370,000.
So let's, let me repeat this. So last year, we raised the taxes by 2%, not 2.5.
Correct. Well, this, this, currently FY '20.
Yes, currently. Okay. And this upcoming year, we recommended only raising them to 1.87.
That's the recommendation I'm throwing on the table.
Oh, what do we have now?
1.75 is the initiative right now.
And will that give you what you need to balance the budget?
We would probably still be a little bit short. Yeah, I, yes, we would definitely, we would still be short. I think I, I'm sure, no, yeah, I think we'd be in the ballpark.
How does the select board feel about that? Mark?
I, I think that's my preference. I mean, I know that's my preference of allowing the tax increase to, to only be 1.85 to 1.9% instead of 2%. It's still better than we did last year, and it's, allows us to maintain the level service.
It, not, the level service, but it also addresses, let me just say that in the, in our budget discussions between Lynn and myself, we are adding custodial help for the council on aging. So it's a little bit more than level service, and we are adding, currently, the discussion is to have additional labor for the Wolf Swamp Fields and the grounds in, in general, per se. So there is, it's, it still equates to a little bit more than level service, not a great amount, but given those two areas, we would still be able to meet that goal.
Just to finish this thought off, the alternative is to not put another $250,000 in a stabilization fund, which I understand the impact of not doing that, but the analogy I draw is, you know, putting money in your checking account and then going without dinner for a month because you don't have enough money to run, run your household. And I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to put $250,000 in a stabilization account if we're going to quote unquote starve our, our operating budget.
But it also saves our credit.
It saves our credit, but I'm not, personally, I'm not convinced how much it saves our credit and what the real cost of, of doing that. I mean, I, I've yet to see anybody give us, give us credit for having OPEB contributions and all that other stuff in our, in our borrowing, and we can still do all that stuff, so.
It's sort of like that it's preggo, it's in there. Because they also, they also haven't taken our rating away from us, and maybe why they didn't, because we had it. I think we're still having the wrong discussion, but I, I say it every time, you know, I've listened to the discussion, and we're talking about, well, we're only going to take the tax rate up this much and this much, and, and we've done everything except saying, what are we going to do next year? Are we going to do the same discussion in the year after that? When are we going to start having a discussion on, if we have to start cutting this budget, where are we going to cut the budget? Where are the, where are the areas of our, that we really don't need, that we can't justify? And we, we're failing to have that discussion, and, and we're going to have to have it. It will eventually, Paul, I, I don't know, what, 24, 25?
Yeah, without any market growth and valuation, you're looking at 25 at this point in time.
Well, if you're, you know, Marie and I, of course, don't agree totally on this, is, do you see any possible way that we will not hit the wall eventually?
No, you're going to hit it eventually because at some point in time, there's going to be reversal of market.
Well, and we're spending beyond, beyond what we're taking in too, or we're, everything here is talking about cutting this fund back, cutting that fund back, and putting it in operation. So we're spending more every year because we're starting to go back on our policies and, and not put the money in the policies that we thought were sound financial policies, which they were. I just think it's a bigger discussion. I understand everybody's little pieces of the puzzle, but there is a major overall discussion which we should be having, even if it's not out in the public, even if it's in executive session. I don't think we'd ever take an executive, but you know, we can't keep going this way.
Well, I think we had that discussion when the survey went out. The survey went out, which said, where are we going to cut? And people said the library, they said parks are wrecked, and they said, I think trash was like third or something. So I think the community spoke, and the question is, if we're still able to tweak it without cutting back on the library?
Well, you are cutting back services, though. You, you're lying if you're saying we're not cutting back services. We've already talked cuts on our, on our policies.
No, it's not services.
Either that, if you don't want the policies, let's, let's get rid of the policies, but we don't want to honor them too. I mean, I can support that if you want to get rid of the policies, but if you have a policy and you don't support it, you know, it's like everybody wants to raid the asphalt count every year. We've seen that happen year after year after year. They, they're into sidewalk money, and, and it's just, we don't, we fail to come back to a real solid plan and stay there, and that's what I think we should be doing.
But the tough question about cutting operations is what you're talking about.
We can't keep growing. We can't do it. Our budgets, our community's not set up, we're not getting enough new growth in our community to support our spending habits.
Well, I think what Paul's saying, though, is we just did expand services, whether it was the Wolf Swamp, and we voted on the adult center, and both those are expansion of services and the budget. I think it was interesting, Standard and Poor, when we were on the phone call with them, they said, you said, we're building new adult center, and they said, well, what's that going to do to your operating budget?
And the people that voted that money to be spent are not at this table having to worry about how we're going to make next year's budget in the year after, in the year after year, because they personally don't care. They took their little thing to the town meeting, and they got it passed, and they're happy. Okay? This is the reality in this room. The town meeting's not reality, that's joy time.
Well, I think the question is, are, I don't think we're throwing our policies out the window. You, you feel like I'm bending my morals?
We're not. But we are, we are, we are
Just a little bit.
We're whittling away at them every year, and we're justifying it through the means of expansion, and I'm saying, when are you going to stop expanding? I mean, I, it's amazing, we are cut back, I mean, we've held pretty good on the tax rate, though, but we're cheating a little bit, Mark, but we're not taking the tax rate up, but we're cutting policy.
Well, no, we're talking about cutting the, cutting less of the rate. We're not, we're still cutting.
Yeah, but we're still cutting back on policies too. We are.
We're cutting back on the OPEB policy.
Well, and you're also, you're, you're licking your chops, he's 1/8 of a percent now on, on, on capital.
Instead of a quarter.
Yeah, but you're not, oh, you already did that, that's right.
That's, that would be an, an area that we've kind of talked about.
There's, one thing is for certain, the capital expenditures in this community are going to grow beyond revenue if you've got a revenue stream set. It's, it's exponentially growing forward, and we can't stop it. It's normal deterioration, and the, the less that we do, the faster the deterioration takes place. Everything, you know, all those things are kind of closing in around us, but they don't, they don't come up in a tidal wave, and they certainly don't wave their hand at town meeting, because you know, we couldn't even get approved this year, $15,000 or whatever it was to do the survey work on our road system so we could get it put in for free money. I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous, that the finance committee fought this, and the town meeting turned it down. Free money! And they turned us down to be able to be ready, to be able to stand in line and say we're ready to go forward and, and be eligible for it.
I think, though, we have to give us credit, that we have been making some serious enrolls into our operational budget, whether it's the conservation of the streetlights, whether it's the, the regionalization of the dispatch is a huge money saver.
Where's the savings? Where's the saving?
OPEB alone.
Where's the saving? Show me, show me, I want to see the stack of money.
We're, we're saving 100 and something thousand a year, is that correct?
Show me the beat.
Right, the, the dispatch costs will be well over $100,000 when you include benefits and everything like that. Like I said, though, Richard, it, it's, we just got it with $158,000 cost that we didn't have a year ago in, in recycling disposal. So if you want to know where it went, that's
And that one's going to get worse.
Uh, depends on the markets in China, quite honestly, but it very could, very well could.
If you read the newspaper, it's just going to get worse.
So we have to look at, at the next big operational savings, which will be another regional project somewhere. That's, we have to look at the next
Do you have one in mind?
No, I think we have to sit down and, and see where the next step is going to be.
I thought maybe you were hiding something.
No, no. Yes, I'll, I'll come up, just give me a little time, I'll come up with some crazy ideas.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll give you back the floor, but I'm just saying, we, we, we talk the talk, but I'm not sure we walk the walk.
I think we are. I think we're slowly moving the ship.
And you always think we are.
Slowly moving the ship.
Yeah, you're slowly moving the ship.
When we look at these projections, and would we be able to even entertain this if it wasn't that the state revenue went up and we're getting more money from the governor?
You know, if, if we got, if we got the number that was originally came out, even though it came out, it came out very quickly from the representative's office, and it was, said, you know, this number's not right, don't rely on it. It was about a $74,000 difference between the original number coming out of, for the news, uh, school reform financing. If we got some more money there, I mean, that, that was 74,000, we got the minimum of $30 per pupil. Like I said, historically, over the last three to five years, these swings were in our favor.
Yeah.
They went the opposite, some of these went the opposite way for us this, this year, and that's, and that's what's hurting us. They went the opposite way, and then the other 158,000, it's just too much to make all these things happen at one point.
So what do towns do? Do they bring in somebody who looks at their services and they just take a hatchet and say, okay, we're going to
That's why we brought in Lynn.
She's a hatchet person. I wouldn't say that.
Yeah, we, we are that person.
Yeah, because you'd have to
This is us. We got to decide where the cuts are going to be. Are we going to expand and tax a little bit more, or are we going to say, Lynn, bring us $100,000 in cuts in services?
You, you have to remember, you're pretty far under the levy amount with, even if it only goes from 240, 244,000 to 300. You know, so it's, you're, you know, cuts don't have to be as dramatic, per se, because you still have some wiggle room there. It's just that you have an initiative on the revenue side to, to help the taxpayer out, and, and you know, that's, that's noble. But at some point in time, it's going to be one or the other. What do you want? Either taxes or, or the services. Right now, we're kind of be able to provide both, and we're keeping taxes in, in check as best we can, and the services remain as is or slightly enhanced.
Mark, for you? Mark, for you?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a comment, because going back to some of the data, and I presented this a while ago, because people at home watching this can get the wrong impression, that the issue isn't that Long Meadow is, is spending, or we're spent, you know, we're, we're going off on a spending spree. We're among the two or three lowest increases in spending of any community in the Commonwealth over the last 10 years, and over the last 35 years, which is since the Prop 2 and 1/2 went in. The issue is, we don't have the money to spend, and so, Tom, you say, what are other communities doing? Other communities are spending at a compound growth rate of 5 and 6%, even though they can only raise taxes on light properties by 2% or 2 and 1/2%, because they have all that new growth. We're spending at a compound growth rate of 2.4% over that, that period of time, which is literally below the allowable 2 and 1/2. Our problem is, you know, we're, I don't know, Paul, you tell me the exact number. 80% salaries or something in our budget, when you look at, at salaries and benefits, in, in our budget. And so, if, you know, if, if we're limited at our revenue increases of 2 and 1/2%, and we're giving out a 2 and 1/2% salary raise, and, and our benefits are going up at, in this case, 10%, or some cases, 8% for medical, you know, it, it's a, it's a losing, losing deal at some point. You, you can't continue to have the same number of people paying them 2 and 1/2% more, having the benefits go up at 8%, and, and only being able to raise your taxes at 2, 2 and 1/2%. So, you know, at some point, we either get relief from that, you know, two, Prop 2 and 1/2 ceiling, and, you know, in which case, you know, whether we're up 2% less, which we are the current year, or next, next year, 1.75 or 1.8, you know, we'd go up the full 2 and 1/2% every year, you know, and we still don't have the, the growth that other communities have. So, the issue is, what are other communities doing? They've got lots of other sources of revenue through new growth that, that we don't have, but it's not because of our spending. Our spending has been amongst the lowest of any community in the, in the Commonwealth. I'll be glad to, I just pulled them up to have the numbers.
So, my question to the board is, do you want to take Paul's suggestion and don't decrease the increase as much as we were, and decrease a little bit on the capital, which is our policies for this year? Or do you want to direct the town manager to cut services and bring us what that would be?
Do you have a question for us? So, do, Paul, do you have any idea of what the, the hit on an average house would be, between that, that eighth of a point to 1.75, 1.75? I don't, that's by a tough calculation.
It's, that eighth of a point is maybe $80,000, probably four cents on the tax rate, so it's, you know, $15.
Yeah. I mean, put it in those perspectives, you're talking about on the average home, 15, even if 20 bucks for the year.
Right.
The value that we would get as a town, I, I, I would vote in favor of, of the 1.75.
Marie, one other, I think the, the bigger question is, you know, if we said, no, hold it at 1.75% and adjust the budget, you know, and I don't want to get there, but at some point, you got to, what does that mean? If we're really 80, 80% salaries and benefits, the only way to make the adjustment is through salaries and benefits. And, and, you know, we've got a unionized workforce, and so that means not paying each person less, it means paying less people. That's a discussion we can't have in the, in, in a theoretical setting. You start talking about people's jobs, it gets very, very emotional, and, very frankly, it, it comes down to, are you going to eliminate jobs? Are you going to have every household pay 15 bucks more? I mean, the question is, what are you going to do two, three, four, five years from now? And the answer is, at that point, there's going to be no choice.
Are we able to eliminate jobs through attrition, through retirements, and consolidate responsibilities?
It, it, I mean, it, it's possible, when the right job, the right person retires, you know, you look at it, you analyze it, can you do it differently? But if it's, you know, if the, you know, the town manager just left, are you going to go without a town manager? No.
Right, police chief, same.
You know, so it's one of those things, if it's, you know, I, I, I don't even want to say a position, because it'll be on and up, Mark, but take, take, take your choice.
CFO.
Yeah, CFO.
CFO.
You know.
I say we just contract him. Are you going to be available in a few years? We could just subcontract him.
Sounds good to me.
Richard?
Yeah, Mark, to your point, I, I had the opportunity over the weekend, or last week, or whatever it was, I talked to a guy I used to work with in DC, and the position that I was in 15 years ago had 140 FTE, and now they're down to 65. And that's a federal agency, that's a park in downtown DC, and they've gone to contract. And they've got a, the, the OPEB is gone.
Yeah.
All of that liability is gone, and they've gone to contract, because it, long-term, it was much cheaper to do it that way. Though, of course, you know, you've already spewed before, they also, the feds also went to a different retirement system in '83 that shed all of the pain that we're going to suffer in with our system, because now it falls on the employees. They, they gave them 7%, and they put money in every year, 5 or 10% for their accounts, and the employees build their accounts themselves. That's the wave of the future. You know, it's not where we're at.
And that's the discussion we need to have, is, you know, what can we do, not worrying about the 2 and 1/2% salary increases, but the 10 and 1/2% OPEB, and the 8% or 10 and 1/2%, 10.1% pension, and the 8% OPEB, and the whatever, healthcare.
Healthcare costs.
Right, right. It's, it's the benefits that are, that are killing us, and, and, you know, how do we have those discussions, and more importantly, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which of those discussions are the town allowed to have with their employees? Because we know, for example, the healthcare costs, you know, we got that one shot, was it, five, six years ago, that we got to change the way things were done, but...
It was more like eight or nine.
Whatever it was. But, but it was, it was an act of, literally, an act of the legislature that required that, that to happen, and, and that's why, you know, we're having discussions like, do we say, all new employees aren't in the pension plan? Are we even allowed to do that? Is that something we start to bargain for? Because, you know, it, it took, took us 30 or 40 or 50 years to get into the mess. To say we got to get out of it in two or three years just doesn't make sense. But if you set a plan that says, all new employees are, you know, defined, defined contribution pension plans, all new employees, you know, have a, have a different medical, or whatever it is, all new employees have whatever it is, you know, sooner or later, you, you, you work, you work your way out of it, and if you're doing what the private sector does, is, you get to some point, and then they incentivize the rest of the employees to move over to the new system, you know, with some kind of incentive process. But we've got to make sure we're A, allowed to do it, and B, we know what we want to do, because we can't continue to be paying 8% increases in, in what I think is 30% of our salary budget, when you look at what benefits are, because we, we can only raise taxes by 2 and 1/2% in a good year.
Why don't we consider, following the recommendations of Paul, but at the same time, task Lynn with coming up with a plan, long-term plan for the next couple of years on how to regionalize or decrease our salary benefits? I mean, we, we've slowly done it, Stephen did it with the Regional Dispatch, and then the, our Assessor, and I know we're working towards that, as Bev, our Health Director, is retiring, we're going to look at regionalizing that position, so we're slowly moving through retirement attrition, these positions off, maybe a more solid, long-term plan that we can try to follow, because it is, it's, it's pensions, it's the benefits that's been eaten.
But everything you said doesn't know anything about it. We, when are we going to get our rep in front of here and find out, what can we do? Do we have, is there any feasible way to change our retirement system?
Well, right now, there is, because I know some people are paying in 7%, and some people are paying in 4%. We already have tier groups, and I know some people across the Commonwealth are paying 1% of their salary towards OPEB. So, I think there's already tools in our toolbox of what we can do.
That's, that really is the thing that we need to find out, because every day that goes by, that we hire new employees and put them under that system, we're going farther and farther and farther down. We can't, we can't continue, it's just, it's killing us.
Do you think you could come up with something, some recommendations for us?
Yep, certainly.
Magic wind up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I always got the impression from Stephen Crane that it's state rules, and you can't have, we can't cut out our little Long Meadow and say, you know, we're now part of Connecticut, you know, we're not going to go along with the rest of the state. I mean, that's the difficulty, is that, you know, these are big contracts, and it is hard, and, but, you know, the federal government did it, and, and that's, it's a different entity than us. You know, they don't, we don't have that kind of flexibility.
So, Lynn, can you see what, you know, see what Tom says, talk and see where we do have flexibility, what we can do, and maybe a plan of our next attempt to regionalize or contract out some positions? But in the meantime, is the board willing to put a motion on to accept the, the bending of our morals?
You keep coming back, Lynn.
Because that's exactly what he's looking for tonight. He's, he's not looking for plans in the future.
He's not after a vote for tonight, is he? Are you after a vote tonight?
Well, you know, Lynn and I can prepare a budget, but, and, and do the best we can, and, and present it to you, and you folks can, can tweak it as you see fit also, so...
But we don't want to stab you in the back after you.
Well, that, that's the thing, that's why we're trying to get some, some, some kind of guidance, but, you know, if, if you tell us one way, great, then we'll follow that one way. If not, again, we can try to do what we think is, is, is best, and hopefully you agree with us.
The question, the question is...
We're nice at night.
Our, our vote on budget guidelines, they're guidelines, they weren't budget mandates.
Yeah.
And so, I, I think, I, I don't know that we need another vote, just to say, hey, if we were to have followed your guidelines, here's what would have happened, and, and as a verbal discussion about, and here's why we didn't, because here's what we did. Now, if you want us to go, go back and tweak it the second round, here's what the impact it's going to be. And I think, having heard what you heard tonight, that's the suggestion I would have, is to say, we heard your guidelines, but here's how we did it instead, because here was the impact of your guidelines, and, and make, make that very clear during the budget discussion. As opposed to having a formal vote, that then, because if we vote on 1.85%, or, or we vote on 1.87%, and he needs 1.88, then, then we're all messed up here. And I'd, I'd rather say, guidelines, you got the guideline, it was 1.75, and if you can't meet that, do what you need to, but that's the, that seemed to be the discussion of a, a few people here, of the, of the issue, of the area of the guidelines, that you could bend with the least amount of, of objection here.
I don't like to break our financial policies, I feel it affects our ratings, and that's why we're talking about actually voting a change in the OPEB policy. But my position is, I'm going to follow your professional recommendations in regards to our targeted policies, on what you feel is best. But I would also like to know, in the long term, how we're going to move our way through this, which unfortunately is full-time benefit of physicians. We have to find a new way of providing our services.
I think within the policies, too, I've been adding the caveat, saying, when affordable, we will go up a quarter of a percent.
Okay.
When affordable.
Yeah, I, no, Richard hated that.
Richard, I, I also put a four in there on capital for you.
I love that. When, when we can, we will.
That's right. Well, that's, you know, raising kids, you, you got your curfew, but you gotta be.
Boy, that's one way to guarantee we never do.
We got, ease up on the curfew.
I'll get around to it, hon, when I get a chance, right?
Hey, that's mine, huh?
The state has hiring freezes, right? They say, we don't want to go over, we're going to have freeze for so long a period of time, because we, we want us to keep our budget within a certain range.
Unfortunately, we just are spending millions on the City Center and Wolf Swamp Fields, which means we can't have the hiring freeze, and we do want another police chief, I think, right now. Right there, we could solve our problem, right?
Well, that means, that's what people do.
We'll share the police chief.
They have to draw a line.
Put nope out.
So, I think you've heard us. Does that sound good? I tried to get your vote.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
We're all sad, it's basically, always we damn well please and let them, let them tear it apart.
Remember, we got to be nice to Paul.
Oh, you know.
Oh, you know.
Why change now?
You'd feel very uncomfortable if you said like this.
You're pretty frisky at the side of the table, go back over.
I'm sorry. Why did you move over here?
Okay, well, I think you have some great ideas, Paul, so I'll support them. All right, anything else on the budget? No? Okay.
You'd support Jack the Ripper, though, too.
No, you're comparing Paul to Jack the Ripper.
Say, Jack, she's a little smaller knife, don't slash quite as much.
All right, election warrant, presidential primaries, I know I'm jumping all over the place, but...
Yes.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we, we approve the election warrant for the March 3 presidential primary.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we're just going to shoot down to the MHC Preservation Award information. You want to tell us a little bit about that one?
Sure. So, I think you saw in your packet, there's an email request from Sandra, Sandy Krenn, of asking for letters of support, she's soliciting letters of support, that we'd like to submit the Brewery Young Mansion for this award, and it certainly helps if there's letters of support from the powers that be in the communities. So, they've made a request that the Select Board submit a letter.
Is there a motion to send a letter?
There's a motion, I'd support the idea of sending a letter. I know, I've, I've talked to people who disagree with the project, who are thrilled with the way it's turned out.
Looks great.
In the heart of town.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And Lynn, could you write something up? And I'll be glad to sign it.
We have a draft, yes, and we'll have it ready on your letter.
Okay, great. And did you want to talk about the Greenwood Building future reuse?
Yes. So, as everyone is seeing, the new adult center go up, the conversation is starting to pick up about what to do with the reuse, with the potential reuses of Greenwood. I'm not prepared to present you some amazing plan right now. What I'm simply asking is for, I guess, agreement that, let me back up. Westcom, I know, had talked about using that space at one time. Now that they're up and operational, they do need some additional space, or a larger facility. They are in, looking at either new buildings, existing buildings, all over the area. With your approval, I would reach out and discuss with them a feasibility study that they would then take on themselves, if they felt that this was adequate space. There, if this did work out, there is potential revenue.
Oh, yeah, huge revenue.
Right, yeah.
Very good. Any, did you want a vote on that, or just a consensus?
Well, I guess, one is just to make you aware that I would hope that you would be in agreement with just at least letting them explore this. Certainly, this is not solidifying anything. There would still, of course, be some further conversation about, is this the right reuse? Is this what the community wants? But I can't fully do that yet, unless I know if they could feasibly use that space.
Is there a motion to allow her to talk to Regional Dispatch about what that plan would look like? I think, according to the charter, you have that right, to rent and lease facilities. But if you want a directive from the board to go ahead with looking at it.
Depends how long the leases actually.
Yeah. Well, again, that's, that's a total administrative charge. What you thought, well, we don't need to get in, no, because we have, we presently have activities over there, too. Are they going to stay, or?
My understanding is, there's one activity that's not moving to the new building, but the remaining pieces of the adult center wing are all moving to the new building.
Your daycare center's going to stay there?
That's staying, yeah.
And, and the, your, your shop?
Well, Maple Shop can now sell to the Regional Dispatches. We, we have a expanded client down.
Well, I mean, there's, there's ample room for a Regional Dispatch.
Potentially.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but they would probably want a newer building.
Oh, no. I think they're looking for rehab state. Oh, no, I think they're looking for rehab status.
I just don't want to miss this opportunity. If another community jumps on and says, we have something, but it's less desirable than what we have, I want to make sure we're there if we do want to do this, that we're there when they're ready to do something.
Well, I think you've also heard that we're worried about revenue and budgets and to turn away a possible non-property tax revenue would just be criminal.
The only thing would be that, once they move in there, they're going to stay. So if we had any other...
Unless they grow bigger.
Well, yeah, unless they get so big they need to build a new building. But that's five down, five, 10 years down the road. So if we had other needs of the town for those spaces, we better figure those out before we move in. Because they're not going to leave for long.
If it's meaningful, I'll move that we, you know, I don't know if they'll allow us or direct is the right words, but have Lynn make some initial discussions with Westcom. I mean, they may find that the rehab costs are too high or, you know, it may fall apart. But at least they got to, run and look at it and come back and tell us. I mean, we just had a discussion about, we need more money. I mean, if it provides revenue for us or if it makes the cost of running a 911 center or wash down along that, it makes a lot of sense to do something like that. I mean, I was fully opposed to giving up a building and I still am, but I think we got to look at it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? You got it. That was where the ball got.
I'll let you know as it progresses, I'll let you know.
Paul, see, that's how you do it.
I don't move for these over a long time.
Okay, signed by law, going backwards because the stuff on the top's just going to take forever.
We could drop it.
Yeah, we might. Then I handed you the gap and I'm going to bed. Signed by law discussion. I know, Mark, you were interested in that and there's, I guess, some movement I heard talking at the Parks Board.
Yeah, we, Lynn and, I think Lynn and Barry, Lynn should probably talk to this, but I'll give you my two cents. So, you know, there's an existing signed by law in town and I think, you know, kind of on the heels of what we're talking about, it doesn't currently allow for sponsorship of signs. And I think that's a potential revenue raiser that we could use to maintain the fields or mitigate the town's cost of maintaining the fields.
And triangles.
And triangles, exactly. So it's, I think it's a little more complicated than just updating the existing signed by law. So.
Do they have any policies in Haggawam?
I don't think we do. I don't think we do, yeah.
Any communities you're aware of?
I meant to ask around today, but I didn't get a chance, I'll do it tomorrow.
Richard, just a quick comment, at the MMA meeting, I went to the municipal law review, there's a whole lot of rulings about signs and so, it's still quicksanded. And that's the summary is, signs, what's on them, where they are, the size of them, how you, just the regulation of signs appears to be a legal quicksand in the Commonwealth.
And this was on the Prudential Center? By Prudential?
Yes.
Are you proposing to take this on and develop something, Mark? Is that what you're?
I think Lynn and Barry are, I'm happy to help out, but I think Lynn and Barry are...
Okay, so Lynn and you guys are already working on it.
Yeah, we're reviewing what other communities have, if they have a regulation or ordinance or bylaw as a, at the request of, it sounds like some of the members of the community. Also, we're looking at this. And just to be clear, the scope that Barry and I are looking at are only town athletic fields, not school property.
Oh, what about triangles? I want my triangles.
Yeah, it was just a town athletic fields, not the triangle.
Okay.
Because the triangle, unless I'm wrong, should really come through you anyway. It would either be a temporary or a permanent sign, right?
Yeah, it has to all go through planning anytime there's a sign, but we've been told up till now, and our triangles look horrible around town, is that we have to have a sign by law before we can get sponsorships.
Oh, I see, okay.
And so that's sort of been held up. Does Northampton have something? Don't they have little sponsorships for green areas?
We had something for athletic fields, but we did not have something for roundabouts or traffic islands. It was something we were looking at. Holyoke did, but it was defunct. And they had it, it looks nice on their website, but they don't follow it. That was my last review of that, maybe eight months ago.
Did Northampton allow signs, signage at sports fields or whatever?
Yeah.
So it's going to be done, right?
Mark, in the mid-1990s, my kids were playing baseball at Stropeville Field. I was, we'd go out there and we had signs all along the...
You didn't ask for permission, you just did it.
They didn't ask for permission, the LBA just put up signs along the home run fence at Stropeville Field for 10 years and they were, they charged them and then they started putting flags on the flag... I mean, it's been done in town just because they did it. And Stropeville Field's kind of out of the way and nobody sees it. You know, you got to actually go drive down there to know what's going on, but it's not like it hasn't been done in long though.
Right.
How many years ago?
Doesn't mean that...
It was 94, 95, 97.
What's the statute of limitations?
Going awry of something else.
There's nothing legal about it.
So you're going to try to pull something together for a Springtown meeting?
Potentially, yes.
I know, there's, all of a sudden, like, everything's coming up at the last minute.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, something's going to slip.
You'll let us know, right?
What slips or?
Okay, anything else on the signed by law? No directives or anything, okay.
What else can we give Lynn?
Well, let's do something nice for the charter amendment on town manager.
That's another one that I'm still working on.
What, do you want us to skip it tonight?
No, I can give you two minor updates. There was some conversation about majority versus supermajority, appointment, reappointment, removal. One thing that did stick out is, so far I've only looked at Amherst and East Long Meadow because I knew that they had fairly recent charters, also with town managers. Amherst only has appointment and removal as well as East Long Meadow. There is no reappointment clause because you could easily say appointment is, you're not necessarily reappointed, you're just appointed, but I don't think there's any harm in keeping it. Amherst, appointment and removal is both majority vote of full town council. East Long Meadow, appointment is majority vote of full town council. Removal is supermajority of full town council.
I might go for supermajority right now while you're hot.
I'm happy to keep looking and do some more research on some additional communities.
What do you guys feel?
I mean, frankly, I like the way it is, which is a supermajority for appointment. I think, you know, appointing, the original appointment of a new town manager ought to have the support of the supermajority of the town, of the select board. And I believe that because even when the select board changes, it's not going to change hopefully by so much that it, that you lose a majority vote. And removal, I think, ought to be a supermajority also. I think for a lot of reasons, it makes a lot of sense. But I just see renewal as, you know, we're renewing the contract and it's not a reappointment. I don't have any problem with the renewals being just a simple majority.
But isn't a lack of renewal effectively a termination?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
It should be all supermajorities, I think.
So how can you explain that one?
Because, well, because one's removal for cause and the other's just, you know, the other's just not renewing a contract.
There's got to be a cause though.
No, it doesn't have to be a cause.
Yeah, but usually there is.
You would have to have a cause.
No, because the cause could be the problem with the contract, not the problem with the manager.
Well, if you don't renew the contract, you're going to be, you're going to have to say why.
A personal reason for it.
Because I'm sure the town manager is going to sue you.
Is there a motion on the floor to make everything supermajority? Or is there a motion on the floor to?
I would make a motion to keep it, you know, the supermajority for hiring and for termination and like Mark says, you know, just have a majority for renewal, contract renewal, whichever happens every three years.
Why don't, why don't we let Lynn?
If it's a motion, I'm second.
Why don't we let Lynn come back? She said she was studying this and now we're running for a vote.
Well, because you're just going to come and say there's different ways of doing it, right?
Yeah.
Did you want to do more research or?
I'm happy to do that if you want.
So is there a second to his motion?
Yeah, Mark seconded.
It did, okay. Any further discussion on?
My discussion comes back to what I said before, which I'll go down to my grave with. Mark, the fact is, if you don't renew a contract, you've terminated the employee. It's the same thing. Don't kid yourself, don't try to manufacture any other terms for it. And you're going to have to have justification for not renewing the contract.
Yeah, but the, then if you don't renew the contract, that one person who didn't vote to renew the contract has decided to terminate that town manager.
What?
Or two people, if you have two people.
No, in other words, if you have a majority, okay, so we decide to renew a contract, Mark will actually be the one who decides to terminate that person because it's one person that's making the decision to get rid of the town manager.
So if you look at it the other way, there's effectively a minority that's in control of the renewal.
Well, the crazy part about it, you can have, you can have three people say they want to renew a contract and then four people go up and say, no, we're going to terminate. You know, come on. You know what I mean? It's the same, I thought it was interesting when you said that they don't even have a renewal vote. Because that's what we talked about before, like, it's in our charter or is it in your contract? Do we have to notify you six months in advance?
That's in the contract.
It's in the contract? There's no reference on the charter on that?
No.
Okay. And if we don't notify, it automatically renews for a one-year period.
So then the question is, if you decide not to renew, would the supermajority be required because you're basically terminating them?
Well, that's what I say, Mary Marie, that's why it's the same thing. It's sort of like, what are you doing?
Interesting question.
Yeah, so it depends on your approach, so.
We could even go 3-3-3 or 4-4-4, I don't think it matters, but I think, I think all, I agree with you, the hiring is the most important one.
Well, I don't know, I think consistency and allowing not an abrupt change of leadership.
True, I'm not going to minimize that, but the hiring though, it's nice to have the board united behind hiring a town manager. The supermajority is a nice show. And this was 5-0 on this one.
Yeah, but the contract, if you have two people out of the five who say, I'm not renewing the contract, I don't like them, I don't, you know, if the two of us didn't like the town manager, we'd say, well, they're basically, they're terminated then.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
And, you know, and that's problematic. Because then you have to start a whole new search.
You got to through the whole process over again. You were promoting a three person on renewal of a contract.
I'm saying renewal, a majority, majority, three, three, yeah, but if you say, to get a renewal, you have to have four out of five, that means two people can stop the position.
One person can stop the position.
Well, how can one person stop it?
Because the three of us vote, two renew, and Mark votes, these two guys, so one of those two, all it takes is one of them to say no.
Oh, right, right, right.
So that's, well, you actually have a tyranny of the minority then.
Yes.
Right, the other thing is, in my opinion, is it doesn't allow the town manager to weather the vagaries of a select board election because you can't deal, you can't deal with one slightly variant select board member because you're right, one person can say, one person can hold the town manager hostage and say, hey, here's what I want you to do, otherwise I'm voting with the...
Should not renew your contract.
Should not renew the contract.
Yeah, so that's why I look at it as the tyranny of the minority. And as you said, that could be the one person who was just voted in, who voted in because they had an attitude about something that happened.
We have not any problems with it happening.
Yes, well, not recently, but...
I don't think so, I don't know, I just got...
I'm your three town managers now.
So is the language vote to renew?
Oh, yeah.
Not sure yet.
Oh, no, but I'm my third town manager.
But you could elect, you could have an election, two new people come on and decide they don't want to renew the contract and then all of a sudden...
That's what I'm saying, it overcomes the vagaries of a single election.
Yeah. Until there's no continuity.
Any other discussion? And the only difference is we're talking about renewal. Other than that, they're supermajorities. All right, all those in favor of supermajorities for hiring and firing?
Terminating with cause.
Terminating with cause and a majority for a renewal.
The majority vote to renew.
Renew. Supermajority for the others. And I can see both ways, I just through my experience. All right, all those in favor of that? All those opposed? Was there anything else on that thing that we needed to decide? Or was that all the only thing that we were concerned about?
That's all I had in my notes for reviewing on just the town manager section.
So do we have an approval of the charter on the town manager? Is there a motion for that?
What charter?
Maybe we should look at it one more time.
You want to look at it one more time?
The charter on the town manager hiring, firing and renewal?
Yes.
That's what we just voted on.
Yes. Yeah, so you're...
There was powers and duties. If you want, I can...
There's a ton more stuff in there. Having to do with capital planning and stuff, it's way beyond, there's a lot in there.
This was just the Section 5 for the town manager. The capital planning stuff specific to the charter, that is coming to you next meeting. There'll be a financial piece under the charter.
So was there anything else on that Section 5.1 that people had trouble with? It's up on the board here too.
This is not the track change version, but I can bring that up if you need it.
Yeah, could you bring that up?
Was that the last meeting?
Yes.
We got that?
Yeah.
Thanks for the tutorial also.
Yeah, no, this is impressive, see how fast she's moving.
Oh, charter, here it is. All right, so 5-1, that was what the change was based on Charter Review Committee's recommendation.
Okay.
That is not what you just voted on.
Oh, how did we make a difference?
You made a change and you're saying...
Supermajority.
No, I'm sorry, yes, 5-1 is supermajority to appoint. There's that sentence at the bottom there is reappointment is vote of a majority of the select board. So that's what you agreed with.
Confirmed.
And then the powers and duties, we discussed a little bit at the last meeting. But I don't, I don't know that we got into such detail that...
All right, do we want to kick that to the next meeting? If everyone could look at powers and duties, Section 5.2?
I mean, I'm looking at it here, it's pretty innocuous stuff.
So you're ready to put a motion on the floor?
I'll move that we approve Section 5 of the modifications of Section 5 of the charter for about town manager. Article 5, excuse me, not Section 5.
Any further discussion?
Article, just what section?
No, it's Article 5, Section 5.1 and 5.2.
Okay.
And 5.3 and 5...
We've already did the removal.
5.
5.3 was just changing from letter to notice.
Right.
5.5 was what we just discussed, supermajority to remove.
Okay, and we have a second, any further discussion?
Who seconded it?
I think Richard Mark did.
Tom just muttered.
All right, all those in favor? Okay.
I know, but that $10,000 raise you wanted.
She cut that off in the bottom, it's on 5.2D. We just not seeing it here.
Doesn't this go to town meeting anyway?
Yes.
Yeah, it goes, it does.
All right, now, you guys up to doing the policies, draft ambulance policy? What change did you make in this?
Most of them are just minor changes, clarification, some minor corrections. The changes I did make that are of material, I moved some... changes I did make that are of material, I moved some words around, but in not allowed uses, we now have any use that is not related to providing ambulance and EMT services unless the fund balance is greater than $350,000. If the fund balance is over $350,000 by vote of town meeting, the balance can be transferred to the general fund for purposes offsetting public safety services. Most of that was found in the paragraph below prior to that. The major change that is in there is under fund balance, and it's the actual calculation of how that fund balance is added to. Basically, any budgetary estimates that we use for tax rate setting purposes, the revenue, that any excess amount of revenue that comes in above the budgetary amount, that full amount will go into the ambulance fund, and then a percentage of the unexpended appropriations for fire department, based upon if the fire department is a $3 million budget and the ambulance is providing a million dollars, one-third of the unexpended budgetary balances a year end would go into the fund balance for the ambulance fund. That is kind of spelled out and written out in fund balance in that first part, that is, it should probably be underlined, it's not underlined, okay, it's not the tracking one, I don't know if you put the tracking one up.
I don't see where it says one-third.
You should be able to get it on the system, though.
Paul, I don't see where it says one-third. Did it print track changes, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have tracked, yeah, I see, I don't know why it doesn't go through like that.
I couldn't get it as track changes, that's what was confusing. I guess the question, Paul, I have is, you know, can we appropriate money from the ambulance fund to the general fund through a policy, or doesn't it have to go before town meeting to move money?
Well, again, it does say fund balance over $350,000 by vote of town meeting.
Right, but I'm talking about the fund balance, you say all revenues in excess of budgetary estimates.
Let's put it this way, any appropriation has to go to town meeting.
Right, so this is just the guideline of what we're gonna do?
With fund balance.
With the fund balance when it gets...
Right.
My question always has been on the management of the ambulance fund and our ambulance costs, is we don't figure in benefits, do we?
We do, if you actually look at the line items that you'll get when the budget comes to you, the first one in the expense, the first one in the expense column is identified as employee and retiree benefits.
Okay.
It says employee benefits EMS. And the only one that it does not include, quite honestly, is the health insurance. It includes a portion of liability insurance, it includes a portion, liability insurance is actually a separate line item, but it's mainly the retirement assessment. And we did that because the employees at the original time already had health insurance because they were firefighters.
Right.
So we wanted to take the excess amount of earnings they were getting, and that's the amount that was costing us money on the retirement side. So that's why we've always left out the health insurance on these employees.
Do we, OPEB?
There is an OPEB calculation also charged in there, I believe, yes.
And so we do take out of the ambulance fund and we take and put in the OPEB fund?
You put it into the OPEB fund and it offsets the retirement, yes.
Do we need to increase that, or?
It is, well, it is increasing, actually, we're trying to go by what the last prior year's actual number is. It's projected in FY '18, FY, I'm sorry, FY '20, it's $118,000. We've jacked it up 10% to $130,000.
Do you think we need to start putting health insurance in there since this is becoming such a big growth thing?
I believe if we're going to add new employees, because we're really adding new employees strictly for ambulance services at this point in time, that we would have to start including the health insurance moving forward.
But you're not gonna have to put that in the fund policy?
I would not put it in the fund policy, I believe it is, there should be, I think in the policies that we approved last week, that there was a budget policy that said any, in any revenue source, be it water, sewer, so on and so forth, that the benefits associated with that revenue source would be charged towards that revenue source. So it is in a different policy, and when it was one that we had two weeks ago, we actually made that approval, that's been in there for, since day one, that policy.
Okay.
And this $350,000 figure, is that based on the cost of an ambulance?
It was based upon the cost of an ambulance, yes. I think we're, I do believe he has a request into the capital, and I believe it's $290,000 that he requested, only because he's anticipating grants to cover a portion of the, some of the equipment that would go to finishing off the equipment and new ambulance.
Yeah, and I just wanna comment, you know, for those watching, is that, you know, they take really good care of those ambulances. You know, I remember a couple of years ago when they had an engine blow, and they said, "Here's all the records, as we did everything right, and insurance, you know, is covered," and they replaced the engine that they purchased it from, and so it's like, you know, but this is great, sounds good, yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, Paul, quick question is, what's the annual revenue estimate?
For the current fiscal year, it's $845,000.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking that is because we have two ambulances. So maintaining a balance to purchase one may be good, but we gotta be able to build it up pretty quickly to...
The fund balance right now is in excess of $400,000.
Okay, the other thing is, I've been around long enough to remember when the ambulance fund was created, and it was created as a result of an individual who was quite ill in town and actually eventually passed away, who was using tremendous amount of ambulance services, he's done in his memory, for the purchase of an ambulance. It was intended to be a capital, that's how it was originally established by town meeting. We've morphed this over the years to now be, okay, it's the ambulance fund and the EMTs and the expenses to run the ambulance, and then it morphed further to expenses in the fire department because everybody's an EMT. But if you go back to, if you will, its origins of capital because the town couldn't, you know, wasn't gonna be able to bond or get, have its own ambulance system, I'm not wondering if it wouldn't be, make sense to have something in here about capital for fire engines, I mean, they're getting more and more and more expensive, and when we started with the fire engines in the Capital Planning Committee, because I was the one who did it, we said, "We're gonna put away $75,000 a year because every X number of years we'll be able to buy a fire engine," I think it was eight years, well, in every eight years, $75,000 doesn't come close to buying a fire engine anymore, in fact, the last fire engine we ended up bonding for a million bucks or something, something like that, for the ladder system. So, I mean, if I was to look at this and say, "What do we wanna do with the ambulance fund?", I'd like to go back to the original use of capital for supporting the firefighters in the town and put something in here about moving it into the fire engine replacement holding fund, or whatever the heck it is, and that's...
Well, it says public safety there, rolls over to public safety.
But not the capital, public safety, my sense was it was for operations or operating budget of public safety.
It says offsetting cost of public safety services, I never really thought about capital versus operating, I mean, we could, you know, public safety purposes.
Because the fire engines are 800,000 plus.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so we'd be halfway there, especially.
Well, again, the balance right now is over $400,000. He is requesting an ambulance for the main town meeting, that a transfer of 290 come out of there already. So the ambulance fund balance is going to drop right after annual town meeting. So it will no longer be in excess of the 350, it will take us a couple of years to get it back up to that 350.
So, but if we change the maximum to 800,000, is that what you're going, heading in direction, in that direction, Mark? Make it 800, because then we could play a fire truck?
Are you automatically, any, I don't know?
I don't know what I'm thinking, Tom, specifically for numbers, what I think we need to do, though, is say, you know, the money, the ambulance fund's revenue ought to be available for capital, that was the original intent of creating an ambulance fund. And we've gotten away from that by extending the use of it for supporting the operations of the ambulance, and then supporting the operations of the entire fire department and public safety department, and now I'm saying, let's put in there the capital for the fire engine, that's all.
Do you have trouble with that, Paul? Making it public safety capital?
No, I just think we just need to be a little bit more definitive as to how much, when, and, you know, so on and so forth.
Yeah, because I wanna see us pay for the cost of the EMTs.
No, I certainly want the services to be paid for, too, and I mean, to Mark's point, I mean, the fund balance is over $350,000, I think we need to fund the ambulance first before any amount is transferred out to a capital item for a fire vehicle.
Well, the other thing is, you could then entertain an argument that most calls, the police show up also, so, you know, shouldn't they get money?
Right, but if we have revenue of 840,000, $45,000 a year in revenue, you know, how much of that ends up in the, if you will, the capital portion to buy the next ambulance, and how much of it is paying to operate the, to pay for operating the department, and I'm just, you know...
I would like flexibility, because right now we're being told our fire department's running over overtime, and if we put it all in capital, we couldn't roll that over to pay for the overtime in fire department.
So the question is, why are we constraining ourselves by having a policy that's more constrictive? Just leave what we've got and keep doing what we're doing.
Well, the only thing he's talking about is the fund...
No, the proposal we've got here is to put numbers on the balance.
Those numbers were in there before, Mark, quite honestly.
Because I don't have a marked...
Right, here's, if this helps, but that sentence was down in this section, then I just moved up here, across that section.
And I hesitate to say only capital, because I just want our costs covered, and right now we're being told, because of personnel shortage, we've got an overtime problem in the fire department, their hands would be tied and we couldn't use that money then. So I'm supporting being less restrictive, like Paul's recommending, just public services.
But the proposal says all revenues in excess of budgetary estimates, okay, shall be sent back to the ambulance fund.
Right, to the ambulance fund, from there, it would be, my position that it goes towards the ambulance first, so that we make sure we have an ample fund balance when we need to purchase an ambulance, then, if it hits, and I'm just saying it's $350,000, then it can be used for any public safety purpose.
Oh, I see, including police, or any...
Any public safety purpose.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
Technically and legally, it can be used for anything, if town meeting wanted to vote it, they could, but policy-wise, I'm saying it'd be restricted to public safety.
All right, is there a motion to approve his recommended change?
Yeah, I'll forward a motion to accept the recommended change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just need some more clarification, Paul. Because, I mean, I've read through it three times and I'm missing it, so...
It's fine, maybe if I send...
If the balance is $350,000 now, okay, we've already got that, in fact, we do, the balance right now is, you're saying is...
$420,000.
Okay, so if we budgeted 600,000 in revenue and we got 800,000 in revenue, that additional $200,000 under this proposal, right, you say, would proportionally go into the ambulance fund based on the cost of the ambulance services relative to the overall fire department?
100% of the excess revenues go into the ambulance fund. The portion of the unexpended amount that we appropriated of the budget, not the revenue budget, the expense budget, we appropriate, again, we appropriate $3 million for the fire department, let's say we spend 2.7, so we have $300,000 in unappropriated funds in the budget. If we said a million dollars was going towards that $3 million budget, one-third has been supplied by the ambulance, I'm saying one-third of the 300,000 unexpended appropriation would also go into the ambulance fund.
Because it was theoretically coming from the ambulance.
Because it was theoretically coming from the ambulance fund.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to say, maybe it's not quite clear there.
Yeah, it's certainly not clear to me, but you...
Any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? I have a question, I know you're starting to work on a pilot agreement, should we be looking at a request for ambulance funds?
I shouldn't have even voted, because I wouldn't interfere with the special.
Or fire engine funds, I mean, because all of these nonprofits are really, they depend on the ambulance service and the fire department service, just something to keep in mind. Instead of going into a fire district, is there a way we could just informally start contracting with some of the nonprofits to give towards these funds?
There is a way we can, yes and no.
Okay.
There's, so, we can certainly have this conversation at a later date, I was in my, in this prior budget conversation, that's one thing I would like to look at tackling, is a more comprehensive pilot program for, my email box will be full tomorrow morning, but for the rest of the nonprofits.
Okay, all right, good. Do you guys wanna quit there, or did you wanna go to the next? I've been told that I don't look good and I should be shutting down. I don't know if that was a personal comment, or you were concerned about my health?
I think you should get some rest.
The staff at LCTV now is roaring.
Yes, yes. Tell Marie she looks horrible.
Yeah, I said, "Tell her she looks horrible," we shut the meeting now.
Yes, the best way...
Maybe we can kill, only because we didn't get change, track change versions of these things, they're very difficult to see what they are.
Yeah, I mean, I can send them separately.
Maybe if you can...
Please do.
Because you have a PDF format, maybe, and not the Word format, you can't see it.
Right, that's exactly what it is.
Right, so I can send the PDF format.
Did you bring them in as Word or as a PDF? Oh, I opened them up.
They have a Word, mine printed out with the changes.
So when you uploaded to the website, was it as Word?
I checked the change to...
That's probably why, so we'll probably have to, I think we can fix it for the next meeting, so it publishes differently?
As Word documents?
I think, because mine didn't, the town manager ones I did showed the track changes.
Your special.
But I think it's just how I brought it in. That's the charter.
Yeah, they come in as PDFs, you can't...
She's got the real one.
And I think if we do the capital and the budget policies, it'll be a good time for us to roll that into a finance goal session, too.
So I'll forward a motion to adjourn.
Was there anything else we needed to cover? Lynn, am I forgetting anything?
No, but just so I'm clear, we'll do the rest of these financial ones the next meeting.
Yeah.
The next meeting is pretty focused, isn't David Martel also expected?
Yes, he was gonna come to speak on the financial portion of the Charter Review Report, unless you tell me you don't wanna do that.
That's gonna be a busy meeting.
I thought we did that one.
Why don't we do that?
The part of the reasoning for that, and I'm fine with changing it, was we started this conversation in early January, and we were breaking it out by pieces...
Right.
To prepare to submit these for the spring town meeting. We can certainly wait, if you want.
Did we already have a discussion with David Martel about this?
On the finance?
I think originally you had a discussion when he reported the whole general final report.
Well, I think the town, the finance committee might wanna have a say in it, I mean, if we're gonna open up the finance and capital, there could be more people than just Dave Martel who might wanna come to something like that.
Well, we could have a special meeting, too.
Do you wanna have another meeting?
We could have a special meeting if we have to.
Okay, so everyone before they leave here tonight is supposed to tell me when they're available for three meetings, the week of March 9th, and then, I don't even know what the, and then the end of February, what are we talking about? So our next meeting's the 17th.
18th.
18th is Tuesday.
The 18th, a Tuesday. The 18th, a Tuesday, so we could do a meeting the week of the 25th, 24th, and we'll try to...
To get a little pressure off the, on the meeting?
Yeah.
That week's better for me.
That week's better for you, okay. All right, so why don't you, everyone give me dates, the week of the 24th, too, and then we'll try to do some more, we'll do finance.
So you're talking about the 9th, the 23rd?
I'm talking about February 24th, that week, having a special meeting, and then the week of March 9th, we need two or three meetings, we don't want, might not use them all, for the budget, because we need to vote the budget on the 16th, and if we want department heads in front of us, we usually have a couple of evenings.
So February 24th.
The week of February 24th, I don't know what your schedule looks like, Tom, so...
Monday, Monday's never going to be much trouble, so we did that Monday.
How is everyone else on the Monday, the 24th?
Oh, it should be okay.
Yeah? Okay, so we'll aim for the 24th, and then everyone will give me dates for the week of March 9th, is the 24th going to be okay, Lynn?
Yeah.
And Paul, is that going to work for you?
Yeah, I think a lot of stuff is just fill-in from, it's already a lot of it's stuff...
I just didn't know if you were, you were available that night.
But part of that weekend.
Paul's not coming anymore.
Okay.
It's all that weekend.
Since LCTV's concerned about me, I'm looking for a motion.
Tom gave a motion.
I put motion, yes, to adjourn, yep.
Yeah, to adjourn or second.
Okay, and Richard seconded it, any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you for joining us, we will be back the 18th of February, and it'll be a joint meeting with the school committee and finance, we're going to invite them, and then we're probably going to be here on the 24th, too, but we don't know if the room's available, so thank you for joining us.